Are there any questions for the commissioners, about any items on the agenda or any additional items that anyone would like to add to the agenda? All right, great. Well, the first item up is tobacco ordinance proposal, post amendments and authorization of study funding, and Stanley Blevins is going to help us out with the side.
Good afternoon, commissioners. I actually bring this matter before you on behalf of the Health and Human Services Board. On their November 22 meeting, they voted sixteen to oh to bring two recommendations to the commissioners for consideration regarding vaping. And we have some information there in the first paragraph of the letter just about some of the serious health concerns we're seeing around vaping, not just in North Carolina, but nationwide. We've seen a rash of deaths. And we've certainly seen folks hospitalized, admission, and serious complications related to vaping in the over the last year. And also, we're seeing a tremendous rise in our school age population becoming quite an issue there. So really, the recommendations are twofold. One is that we include vaping in our county ordinances around places that we can and cannot smoke, so that we consider that a form of nicotine use and don't allow vaping where we don't allow smoking. Also, that we change the personnel ordinance so that this also applies to staff. So right now, if a staff member wanted to vape in a county vehicle, they could. There wouldn't be anything in our ordinance that would say that we'll not allow. And then the second recommendation, really, from the Health and Human Services Board is just to maybe do a longer term, you know, more in-depth study of what should our county's tobacco use policies look at. I think it's been a while since we've really looked at those ordinances. A lot of counties have continued to do a tremendous amount of work on this issue. And while they're not really bringing forth any recommendations, they just said to look at things like all types of tobacco to be included in the ordinances, should the scope be expanded to places like greenways and other public spaces like that, signage, do you have the right signage, you know, it's a little land as well. And so if the commission were to, you know, act on either one of those, certainly our department will be more than willing to step up and be a resource to the commission.
So if we do something like this, do we, what do we provide for people that are vaping or smoking or whatever to be able to get off of that? Do we provide anything as a service or?
We really don't. That's a really good question. And I certainly put myself out there as the vaping expert. I mean, it is a legal, I mean, it's a legal substance, just like cigarettes are a legal substance. It's just that, you know, vaping first came out as actually seen as possibly a way to help you come off of cigarettes. And if you read the CDC website, they still suggest there's a small segment of the population where vaping might, actually might be a help to them. So if you're doing it correctly and as prescribed, it might be better for you than smoking a whole lot of cigarettes. What we're seeing is folks are vaping things that probably should not be going into their body. That's where we're seeing, I think, a lot of these deaths. Certain chemicals are getting in their bodies. People are getting into vape CBD oil. We see, for a while, we thought that was inappropriate for a while in the hospitalizations because it was showing that in some of the toxicology. So really, I think, like, for years, you know, I grew up in North Carolina. Everybody smoked when I was a kid. Nobody knew it would hurt you when I was a little kid. And I think the more we learn, we realize that it will just hurt you, it will kill you. And then second, if you smoke, it's dangerous. And I think we're just getting to the point where the research is really coming out, you know, vaping. And so just really bring this forward really as a matter of the public's, you know, for the public's safety.
All right, commissioner, any other feedback we want to share at this time? Well, I appreciate this being looked at. I mean, it's really supportive of, you know, reviewing the policy, the statement. And I think the county's traditionally tried to be the leader in this area. And I think we continue to try to do that. So I'm sure it's going to be a little bit of a issue.
Mr. Boulter, I should say too, do you work with Tobacco Free Injury Prevention Branch of North Carolina? And they would offer some resources if a person really did want to help with that. But as far as our HHS, we don't offer any type of services.
Thank you. Thank you very much. All right, next up, we've got Josh O'Connor, who's going to give us an update on the Greenway Master Plan and the Woodfin Project.
Brown, it's hard to hear back here on both of you, speaker and you all. It's hard to hear.
All right, thanks, Senator.
All right, we'll go ahead and start the presentation. You all may have to remind me that I'm clicking on the wrong one as I go through mine, so I can see where we're at. So this is just to bring you up to date on our greenway projects overall and to also bring you up to date with some specificity on the Woodfin Project. First, we're going to talk about the Greenway Master Plan. We're going to go through what it takes to go from conception to construction, look at what areas we're prioritizing and where our focus is from a geographical perspective, and then look at the project probability and status reviews are basically where we're at with each project. After that, we'll transition from an overall conceptual review to the Woodfin Greenway Project Status Update, looking at the Woodfin Highway 251 Greenway as well as the Beaver Dam Creek Greenway. So our Greenway Master Plan, which was adopted in 2012, includes 102 miles of collective greenway corridors. When it was adopted, it included no dedicated funding, and it seeks a variety of funding from whatever sources we can get money from, essentially. To date, that has largely been Federal Highway Administration Surface Block Transportation Program or Surface Block Transportation Grant Program. And we've been able to construct 0.4 miles of greenway to date. That's down south on Lake Julian. It's the connector between the Lake Julian Park and the Lake Julian Park Connector. I think our biggest takeaway with greenways as we've developed the department, developed our approach, is that greenways take a lot longer than we originally anticipated, both from an obtaining funding perspective, a regulatory perspective, and just the immense amount of work that it takes to build a greenway. We start out with the master plan. That's where we started prior to 2012. From that master plan, we transition into what is called a feasibility study. And those feasibility studies give us a very high level of conceptual view of whether a particular greenway segment can work. And it starts to filter out some of the high level cost. It's not an effective tool for making cost estimations, but it's an effective tool for us to make decisions as to whether or not we're going to go further in the greenway design. Once we make that decision, we go into preliminary design and engineering for the project. That process can take one to two years plus. And that allows us to have a finite path to the greenway, understand where the greenway is going to go, what property owners are involved, and what our regulatory issues are. From that, we can go into land acquisition. Land acquisition is simply acquiring all the easements and the property we need to construct the greenway, making sure that we have a clear path alignment. One thing to note there is that under the original adoption of the Greenway Master Plan, one thing that we are restricted from using is the power of combination to build a greenway segment. So acquisition for us is an important step. And there are often times when we may have to go back to design and redesign a segment of the greenway if we're not able to acquire property voluntarily from the property owner. Once we go from acquisition, we move to construction. Again, that process can take anywhere from a year to two years, depending on the length of greenway that we're looking at. But then we can actually walk on the greenway. One thing that I tried to let the advocacy groups understand about greenways is even if someone were to give us a million dollars, two million dollars with the cash, it would still take that five to up to 10 years to actually construct the greenway because of all the steps that we need to go through to do it. It gets even more cumbersome if we're using money that comes from the federal government or the state government because that just continues to add to the regulations that we have to meet in order to go to construction. As we've laid out our approach to greenways, 102 miles is a lot of greenway to cover. Very financially expensive and not altogether economically feasible with our, we're trying to bite off so much at once. So we focused our greenway effort on the I-26 and French Brock Corridor. The largest reason for that is that gave us projects to focus on that would prioritize very well during grant funding cycles. And it also allowed us to align with the efforts of other municipalities. So by choosing the I-26 corridor, we were basically able to take our greenway efforts and go from the north and south of the city of Asheville and connect into all their work on greenways, which creates a longer contiguous stretch of greenway for our citizens to enjoy once it's fully realized. And this is an overall map of greenway projects that we have engaged at some point from the Greenway Master Plan. In order to make it onto this map, the project had to be at least studied at a feasibility level to these of the projects that have been through that process. And I'm going to break it down a little bit more to explain where we are at each of those projects and what our probability for completion is. But first, I wanted to go through and explain how we assess probability of completion and how we arrived at those conclusions. So something that's got a high probability of completion, typically, we have the funding source for the next phase identified. It will make significant advances in our greenway system from an activity standpoint. And we may be facing having to send some grant funds back because of prior agreements we've made. Medium probability of completion, that means that we think we know where to get the funding from. Construction would interface with our larger greenway network. And we anticipate having to send funds back to a granting institution within five years. Low is that we've got no funding sources identified. Our construction costs exceed our current budgetary capacity. And we don't have any pressure to have to send any funds back in the near future. So these are our high probability of completion greenways that we've got. I will start with the Inca Heritage Trail, since we're going to spend more time on the other segments. But the Inca Heritage Trail, it's about a two mile section out in Inca. It's part of the Inca Recreation Destination. It'll connect our work at the Moncom County Sports Park to the ongoing work at the Bopulus Ballfields. We currently have the request for qualifications and letter of interest issued for that project. And we've started receiving responses for it. And we expect to begin design in the first quarter of 2020 and have the engineer design by 2020. Any questions there?
So you just do the request for qualifications for engineering services?
Correct.
Not for construction services. So that'll be a separate process once the design is complete?
Correct. And we anticipate this being a somewhat quicker completion timeline than we normally encounter because we're not dealing with a large number of landowners. We already have a pretty good understanding of the lay of land and more in-depth feasibility study than we typically have, as well as some intermediary engineering. The biggest constraint that we're going to hit with Inca Heritage Trail is making sure that we've satisfied all the federal agencies and the requirements they have for core engineers and FEMA. And we do also have some cultural resources in the area that we're going to have to take into account as well.
But all of the right of ways in place for the property?
As far as we understand now, that was an agreement as part of our approach to Inca Recreation Destination and our partnership with Bopulus Ballfields.
All that's been executed?
We need to do some further work on the west half of that trail. Remember, we did approximately from us behind the school to about the bridge. We needed to get some more players at the table for the bridge over to near where it comes out, near the Ingle side of that property, to complete that.
So the, all of the land under the Martin Luther Partnership, that's all in place. But then beyond that, thereby the additional?
There's some additional players to bring to the table on that. We don't anticipate a huge problem with that. But we need to make sure we get Army Corps approvals to put the greenway on top of that firm and to work with Dominion Gas to make sure we have the greenway on top of where they're putting that on the ground.
So the landowners are in some place where there's some party stuff that'll be included?
A little bit of both on the west half.
Part of that is just looking for that level of specificity in terms of what the actual layout will be of the greenway. We have it from a conceptual standpoint, but that's just putting a line on an aerial photograph. We're going to be narrowing that down to where we can locate exactly where it's going to go within a 30-foot easement and what our additional construction needs are at that time. We are looking to capture some synergies with some utility upgrades in that area. And that'll also influence some of our decision making, which is a reason that we don't have it fully specified with landowner agreements in some of those areas.
Okay, so my understanding is this was pretty much ready to go. And so they had all the agreements were signed. I'm not talking about federal. I'm talking about everything's done. Everything's done. And we're, you know, we got our grants, and we're going to put the foot on the gas. And to me, this looked like an easy one to get done. I'm not hearing that.
No, I think this one is an easy one to get done. And it's just the stage that we usually assign agreements at, or further along in design, so that we know that we're not going to go back and sign agreements a second time.
So when would construction start?
We would be looking at 2021. And we've, this project, we've been waiting for DOT to release the funding in order to start design. And that's been one of our major holdups right now. The funding became available for the project in October. Due to some funding slowdowns and CDOT, we're not able to access the funding until next year.
So what can we do to speed it up?
I think speeding it up is going to come in how effectively we deal with the design and construction process when we have communicated with firms about how we're going to handle requests for qualifications. We left it relatively open-ended in terms of our schedule and have let them know that we expect this to be an expedited schedule compared to what we would normally see on some of our greenway projects. And this still has us, right now, meeting our anticipated timelines for construction for our TDA grants.
Let's keep doing.
We've got the Beaver Dam Creek Greenway at the northern side of the map. We've got engineering and design set to commence on that project in 2020. And I won't spend much time on that because we'll go into more detail as we move through the presentation. The same with the Riverside Drive Greenway. We have design underway. We've completed 30% of the design. And we're going to get into some of the issues that have helped sign back there further in this presentation. And then we have the Rad sip connector, which we spoke about at your last meeting and lives on the agenda for tonight. And that's a project that will be transferred to the city of Asheville, but that's our connection into the city of Asheville's work through our district transportation improvement project. So moving into our greenways with medium probability of completion, we have the 191 corridor and the Big Creek Lake Julian Greenway. We partnered with North Carolina DOT as they were assessing the expansion of I-26 through this area. And we're able to get them to put the bill for the feasibility studies along this corridor. We've got these projects entered in North Carolina Department of Transportation State Transportation Improvement Project, so that they are waiting for funding. But it is a pretty intensive construction quarter with about 13-plus miles of greenway to go to construction. So this is one where we've identified the basic needs on a master plan level. And we know where we need to go with the greenway. It's just we need to find some funding, commit to funding, and move it forward. But it's sitting there on the back burner until we can advance some of our other high probability projects forward. So any questions there? And we've got two low probability greenways. One is the Rams Creek Greenway. We've actually advanced that to engineering and design. We're working on getting an RFQ issued. The reason that we have it as a low probability of construction is we do not have any funding identified for it. It's largely within the town limits of Newerville. So we'd be looking for some new funding partnerships to bring that greenway to construction. We are advancing it to design, so we'll have further information about in cost. And we do have Federal Highway Surface Transportation Block Grant Programs available to help us with that. Again, we don't have information or our funding was identified for construction yet.
And what's this site control further right of way look like for this project? Is there, are there a lot of different property owners who would still need to agree to work on the project? Or most of the property owners or all of them conceptually in support of doing this?
We've not started engagement. We have to be careful with how we engage property owners because of some of the federal regulations out there. We, when we engage design, we will go to property owners that we feel like will be impacted and ask them to sign a letter of commitment. But at the end of the day, if we use federal funds, we also have to show that the landowner knew that they could achieve fair market value for the easement or the property. And so we typically wait to execute.
Okay, so understanding that process on this project, is that, is the right of way for the easement seen as, you know, likely to be fairly doable or quite a challenge? I mean, I guess the reason I ask is that for these, a lot of these projects where you've got a lot of different landowners who need to all agree, and maybe there's some workaround if someone doesn't. I mean, to me, it just seems like a huge potential barrier for some of the projects. And so I'm just kind of wondering, is that viewed as probably not a big challenge on this one, or could be, could be a significant challenge if there was, you know, funding actually go forward?
I'd put it in moderate. And not moderate is a lot of property owners. There are some larger parcels in there. Probably less than moderate. I mean, you're also building right next to the creek, which is going to have a lot of undeveloped or undesirable property. So in context like that, it's a little bit easier to navigate the easements and right of way. We do have some room in the project to move the alignment if we need to. We're not as constrained on other projects. So this one's not going to be as hinted in as some of the projects that are, like the Woodfin Project, that have other constraints that are feeding into it. And then the US 70 Greenway, this actually overlaps with the Fontaflores Trail. The commission approved to overlap our greenway system with the Fontaflores State Trail several years ago. It's an effort that we're pursuing, but it's also a pretty expensive effort, given how much land that we're looking at in Moncom County for that trail to traverse. We're looking at about 16 miles of trail if we follow the current alignment. So it's there. We're looking for funding. We're also looking at how we can break that greenway down further into more digestible chunks. But given the scope of that greenway and the magnitude of that greenway, it's not risen to a high priority. So now I'm going to bring it back around with a little bit of information about the Woodfin Project and its current status. So the Woodfin Greenway collectively is five miles of greenway. It's currently programmed into projects, one for the Beaver Dam Creek Greenway and one for the Riverside Drive/251 Greenway. Each segment was part of our Greenway Master Plan in 2012. It was also part of Woodfin's Greenway Master Plan in 2011. I've got some more detailed information on that Riverside Drive Greenway. It's a three-mile corridor. We anticipate the cost of construction to now be around $2.5 million a mile. That's what our current regional average is going for. We anticipate it to be through with design already, but this project is kind of drug out due to some regulatory issues and trying to secure some of the easements and right of way, which we have moved forward with. But we did encounter some constraints that delayed that project more heavily than we anticipated. We currently have grant funding total for this project of $3.66 million, $3 million is for the construction of the greenway. $660,000 is for the design. And I'll break those figures down a little bit, as there are some figures that involve county matches as well. We do have some terrain difficulties as we go through there. I think we've identified over 150-plus stream outfalls where we have pipes going across the bank and out into the stream. So that's something that we're going to have to mitigate as we're constructing the greenway, find out what those sources are. And we also are pinched in between the river, a railway, and a roadway in places that gets pretty challenging in terms of where we're going to put the greenway. This funding is a collective budget between the town of Woodfin, Moncom County, and we received funding for the TDA that I'll break down in just a second. So any questions? The Beaver Dam Creek Greenway is another two-mile segment. This goes from MSD's administrative facility, the College of Beaver Dam Creek. It comes out near the train depot for Craggy Mountain Railroad, near Merriman Avenue. We also anticipate the cost of construction for this greenway to be around $2.25 a mile. We've seen, right now, we have $2 million for construction secured. We also have some additional funding for design that we anticipate receiving. That figure is about $220,000 for the design.
So Beaver Dam, you're estimating the cost is $2 million a mile for what in the greenway?
$2.5. And that's, that's based on looking at projects and cost overruns around the region. Originally, years ago, when we started, we were told $1 million a mile. And pretty much every greenway project that every municipality has encountered has doubled up that project cost, if not more.
Are you estimating that for the project in, in the Canada project as well?
Yes. That one's fortunate because we are dealing with fewer landowners. And we may be able to capture some of those synergies with utilities, where we can go straight over the top of existing utility right of ways. And that's not something that we have available in some of these other projects. If we can do that, it probably decreases our cost of design and construction because we're dealing with a more level pad that we can start from.
It just, you know, I mean, it just intuitively seems like projects through, you're saying that's the average. We're just assuming for every mile. It's not specific. I mean, just intuitively, like, building a project through that kind of urbanized, tight footprint in Woodfin along the river, I mean, I can just see how that would be really complicated for a bunch of different reasons. But these projects like this one are kind of more out in the country. I don't know, it just seemed like they would, I can see how the costs would vary widely, you know, widely between different projects. Is that how you anticipated it would play out? Or, I mean, some might be quite a bit less, some might be quite a bit more, just depending on exactly what you have to engineer?
Yeah. And one of the historic problems with the link greenways in this area is underestimating what's underground. That's, that's always been an issue. As much as you start digging, you might find old cars, any amount of landfills. And we are running through some of that stuff with Beaver Dam Creek, where we anticipate we're going to hit some segments of that. We also have a real line that runs parallel to the greenway or running next to a creek that we're running, pre-adjacent to some old landfill area. So we don't want to back down those costs too much because we may be dealing with some brownfield remediation. Can we get there?
Yeah, I'm just wondering, does it make, it may not even be doable. Does it make sense to concentrate our efforts on the easements to achieve and just throw everything at it to get it done quicker? Or, I mean, so I mean, I look at the whole plan, and it's, you know, four tenths of a mile has been done since it was adopted in 2012. And so it's obviously taken a lot longer than people think, right?
We have to remember that we didn't dedicate any funding until 2015, so that significantly delayed our construction timelines. And then once we began to get funding, we started out, I would say, in the hundreds, like, small hundreds of thousands. That allowed us to start pursuing grants. But a lot of those grants, once we pursued them, are about two years out. So we're basically still caught in that original black time. Dumping all the efforts in one greenway project is not necessarily going to speed us up because one of the things that slows us down is the number of coordinating entities. Like, anytime we move money for this project, anytime we hire for this project, it's got to get approved by state and federal agencies. And so that, that significantly slows us down. If we were to look at using non-restricted funding sources, we could dramatically speed up the cost of greenway construction. But that'd be, we'd be coming out of pocket 100% of the cost. Once you federalize a project and apply federal dollars, you completely change the regulatory landscape.
Has that been seriously considered in any of these projects? Especially the ones where, you know, just looking at the topography and the land, it might be relatively inexpensive to build some of these if you just go, just go do it.
There are some conversations occurring with that. A lot of it is more linked into what conversations can we have with developers to enter the developer development approval process? Can we create some of those greenway linkages that way and require greenway dedication as part of large development construction projects? And at that point, that's, that's one mechanism to find some funding there. To date, I've not seen anybody that's, like, a local municipality is willing to pull a bunch of money out of pocket. And then we do chance running into issues with ADA compliance or further compliance should we decide to upgrade one of these facilities in the future with federal money. It's a strategy. It's just not something that I've seen anybody willing to jump out there and do yet. there and do it yet. So this is the collective map of this Greenway in a little bit more detail. The brown segment to the north is the Beaverdam Creek Greenway that's running east to west, and then that transfers to the Woodfin Greenway that runs parallel to the River and Riverside The reasons why we use federal funding is we started out with a $1.13 million dollar local funding commitment for both design and construction. We partnered with FHWA, that brought in $4.53 million for a total of $5.66 million on the total project. And that's not including TDA funds or the funding for the other components, the Woodfin project.
Is that for all the Greenways you want?
That's for one, that's for the Woodfin Greenway.
I'm sorry, I made a misinterpretation, I thought you said there's 3.6 million in funds for this project?
The 3.6 million is for Riverside Drive, the other 2 million is for the Beaverdam Creek, so collectively for the two Greenways, which are all part of the same project, there's five ones.
Okay, 5.6 is for Beaverdam and alongside the river.
Yes.
Between the county and the FHWA, but that doesn't count the town Woodfin and doesn't count the TDA?
Correct.
So there's actually like, when you add it all, there's a lot of money for this project, right?
I think we, it's around 12.
About $12.
And then just got some shots of some of the stuff that we're trying to work with in the area. This is the Mill at Riverside Studio. One of the issues that we have there is you can see how far the pavement extends toward the riverbank. They've been exceptional to work with, but it's not just a typical Greenway design, we're having to figure out how to integrate current parking areas, retaining walls out there, MSD's equipment storage yard, and other issues in order to get the Greenway through there. It's, it's more complex than just asking the landowner to give us a footprint for the Greenway. In some areas, we're having to go through and ask them, can they move fences and retaining wall structures, and a number of things on their property in order to accommodate the Greenway. So that's lengthened the amount of time that's taken for design and caused some issues with our cost overall. This is another issue that we ran into on the backside of Silverline Plastics. We have a Duke transmission line that typically won't allow us to be within 30 feet of their poles. When we examined that, we originally looked at some cannoli burn structures that would go out over the French Broad River in order to get us out of the Duke right-of-ways, and after looking at the cost, assessing the cost, we were able to go back with Duke and ask them for some exceptions, which they've been willing to work with us on to be able to put the Greenways closer to those poles. It's not without, it's some additional design costs and some fencing structures and some other things that we have to do, but working through solutions like this have dramatically increased our design cost, hopefully allowing us to reduce our construction cost in the long run. This is an option that, once we were able to navigate this, took a significant amount of time, but also saved us a couple million dollars in not having to cannoli burn the Greenway design over the French Broad, and has a better environmental and ecological impact as well.
So Duke has, Duke has formally agreed to let us use a, have a right-of-way underneath the, with or within the utility transmission line easement?
Formally, not on paper, but formally, they committed to that in the last onsite meeting that we had with town representatives and Duke representatives.
It's just a, it's kind of verbal agreement, it's called?
Correct. And it's all, it's a three-way agreement with Silverline Plastics as well, because they've got to make some concessions where they're allowing us to site the Greenway. Now, these are the other design considerations, there's how close we are to the rail line, power line, the road, and the train line. Fortunately, Cracking Mountain Railroad is not a conventional rail line, it's one that's privately owned, we may have been able to work with them to get us closer than we would typically be to a rail line, because we've got a lot more certainty on what's going to be operated on that rail line and how often. But there are spots without those agreements that we wouldn't be able to get the Greenways through without having to redo some road realignments. And the blue lines that you can see there just show the amount of property that's impacted by both FEMA floodplain and FEMA floodway. One of the things that drives cost on a project like this is since we can't just move the budget out of the floodway, we're having to do no RISE studies and additional engineering studies to show that the Greenway's not going to have an impact on Asheville's overall flooding. And that's just a more in-depth view of the connection between Woodfin, taking us through Monford down into the River Arts District. So our status with the Woodfin project right now, the design for the Riverside Drive Woodfin Greenway is at 30%. The project is part of a larger destination project similar to, will be organized with Inca Recreation Destination, includes Silverline Park, which is currently under design, the Woodfin Wave, which is a structure across the entire French Broad River to create some water sports tourism, and the Woodfin Wake Park, which will be the amenities to support that wave structure. We are the lead agency working with several partners, we take on the Greenway design and construction, and we're also collaborating with Federal Highway Administration, the Town of Woodfin, and the Tourism and Development Authority to get the project done. The initial cost estimates, came in when, at a million dollars per mile. The feasibility study that we originally engaged for this project actually put construction at in the hundreds of thousands a mile, a mile. When we went to construction and started doing our initial investigation of grants, we based that on regional figures and elevated that significantly to a million dollars a mile. But at that point, there still was not a lot of regional context in terms of Greenway construction. It was after we saw New Belgium constructed and some of the other projects hit significant cost overruns that we went back and adjusted our figures a second time. The current Greenway costs have escalated to that $2.5 million dollars a mile right now, that's based on our regional figures, and our engineering and design efforts have been complicated by the regular prior requirements. We're dealing with some pretty poor land quality in that area. There are areas that we found that we're going to have to remove soils, augment soils, remove debris, and do a lot of ground preparation work that we did not originally anticipate. We have some issues with landowner preferences, so we operate, so we've got some issues where it could be out bad next to the river, the landowner doesn't support that, and so we're going to have to take that section of Greenway out in front of the building unless that landowner changes their mind. It's taking longer than anticipated for the utility coordination, even in coordinating with the railroad, just to get a permit to cross railroad, a lot of times we're looking at a three to four months approval period, and that's not with construction, that's to get our people across the railroad. We've got historical environmental damage and degradation, we've encountered pretty much everything we could along that section of Greenway, that's not something we didn't anticipate. It's just given us a lot to work with in terms of how we accommodate those issues for design. And then we have the transportation constraints with the road being so close to the river there. Our ability, ability to advance the project construction is somewhat limited because of some capital flows that we have with the project. I'm going to break this down for you. So, and breaking that $3.66 million down further, our initial design grant for the Greenway was $660,000 for the Riverside Drive portion of the Greenway. I think there's been a conception that that was our budget for the project, and the reality was the $660,000 was how much that we could get from FHWA when we made the application, and maxing that application out. Our current cost estimate from the engineer placing, places our cost at $1.262 million, and that's the additional capital we need to advance that design toward completion. As I mentioned, we've got a variety of funding sources contained within the project. We've got the Woodfin bond coming in at $4.5 million, we've got TDA coming in with a $2.25 million dollar contribution. FHWA is coming at $5.1, and Monmouth County's commitment at this point is $1.132 million. In order to satisfy all the granting regulate, or granting entities as the conclusion of this project, we are obligated to produce both the Greenway, Silverline Park, Riverside Park, and the Woodfin Wake Water Wave.
I'm sorry, did you say that you were a part of the Beaverdam project as well?
Yes, like the Greenways collectively, that's, that's what's listed in our TDA application.
So it's just a TDA requirement, that's the only place that's for a part?
Let me look at that slide for just a second. That is our only requirement, I believe it was listed in the Woodfin bond, but that's not a requirement that extends to us.
And the bond referendum now is listed as a project?
The Greenways were listed as part of the bond referendum, but that's not something that.
That's not a obligation?
Correct.
It was kind of identified as all the projects that hope to get done as part of their local funding.
Correct, and we are third party to that, so it's not an obligation that we are obligated for.
So it's not a TDA requirement, it's a bond requirement?
It is a TDA.
It is a TDA.
Because all of those were looked together in one ask from TDA.
Correct, and in order to get TDA approval, they want to see more of a destination concept, and so all of those components were listed as deliverables for the TDA grant. So the Woodfin project costs, I've got it broken down for the Riverside Greenway, our original design money was $132,000, county commitment that got us $528,000, decided money for a total of $66,000, or $660,000 design. Our current estimated design cost sits at $1.617 million, so we've got a major deviation there. Our current construction obligation in terms of Monmouth County's pay-in is $600,000, and we'll get $2.4 million from FHWA for a total of a $3 million construction budget, which is clearly less than the $2.5 million a mile that we need. Our estimated construction cost at this point exceeds $6 million for Beaverdam Creek Greenway. We currently don't have any design money invested from Monmouth County. We do have $220,000 pending from the FHWA for designing that Greenway, $400,000 for county commitment to construction, and $1.6 million for FHWA's commitment to construction for a total of $2 million construction. These numbers are laid back out. What I want to focus on is in terms of consideration for action and next steps, is that we look at, in order to advance this project forward, currently, we're kind of stuck until we have some additional capital outlines to continue doing construction. As of right now, we've spent $141,000 of our $632,000, or $660,000 in that design, but in order to advance the design to completion, and to be guaranteed that we're going to get to completion, we need that $958,000 deficit. Right now, we're stuck between continuing to advance the design and running out. Once we've got the money, or at least spent some of the money that we have on hand, but what we've requested is that we reallocate some of those, the funding for future construction to get us through design, and look at an additional obligation in the next budget year to supplement this project.
And you're referring just to the corridor along the river?
Yes.
So, and what would the additional amount be in the, in the next budget that would be requested?
It's going to be $958,000, I think.
That, that.
But doing it that way allows us to continue work on the project now and continue advancing into our design instead of having to wait until the budget year.
So, you know, I'm definitely in favor, and this is a, this is a, I mean, this is a complex project, you know, and it's going down there, and it's a bit like versus the way, it's, it's a type of, for an utility center, things going on down there, it's a busy, busy area, but I think, I mean, I think that Woodfin, the, especially the corridor along the river, this will be one of the best projects we have, it'll be so heavily utilized, it will, I'm definitely in favor of doing what we can to continue the design process on it, you know, putting some money from construction to design of this project, but I guess I would also just kind of raise the question, I mean, I'd like the idea that we're planning some other things that are further out, but just in thinking about, I mean, I think there's also just, just people to get somebody's done, right? So if there's, if there's funding allocated for other, to me, this is, you know, the project in Inka, which I think is going to be on a faster track.
It is.
Nothing's easy, right, but it should be relatively easy, relatively easy. So, so hopefully it comes in, it comes in less costly than what's typical, or possibly harder here, but, I mean, I would also be able to redirect some resources from other projects to just make sure this one is, this one's getting done, so.
So I'm kind of in a similar way, I think, and tonight, we're going to, we're going to vote on something else that, you know, that's a million dollars more, you know, and that's, that's tough, we've got to explain to the, but it's not directed to you, it's just directed in general, I'm not sure much of it will, but also think that when, you know, when you're in a community, and you hear all the good news about what's happening, and you get excited about it, kids get excited about it, and you don't want them to, you know, grow up on you before it's done, you know, so instead of having this big monster plan that we're putting a little bit of money everywhere, it seems to me we should pick what we can get done and direct that, you know, that funding towards it, so I think that's it.
Yeah, I mean, these are all great corridors, I'm not just getting them all happened, but I just, there is, and I hear you, some of these decisions that are with other agencies, not us, all voting for them, so it's, so I totally get that, but I would be supportive of, you know, focusing our resources in the ways that we can to help get our, you know, our top priority projects to be advanced as fast as we possibly can.
I think the biggest constraint there is that we're, when you look at Greenway investment, like Optica, we've got about $21 million in federal highway grants coming down, it's a $4.2 million county commitment, so even reallocating those is not going to get us the capital funding that we need in order to advance the projects, we're using so much external funding compared to such a small proportion of county funding, and that just kind of extends how long it takes us to get access to the capital.
Yeah, I, I hear that, I hear that our percentage is small relative to that, but also just, I mean, if all these projects play out on the cost that you have, I mean, these other projects aren't going to, aren't going to get done, right? Other than the reasons you just explained, there's not enough money to do them in the foreseeable future, so I realize like our money is, is not the biggest driver in this, but it sounds like, you know, we're going to need to put in more, we want to see some of that realistically, so I'd be, and I'm open to that, I'm very supportive of these projects moving ahead, you know? It sounds like if we did do some redirecting, we'd have to talk to TDA about like, hey, would you give us some of your money coming over here so we can get this one done? I bet that, I bet they'd be open to that conversation, because they will see things get done too, maybe if some of these projects end up being more complicated and expensive than originally, than we first looked at them. But anyway, so I'm, I think, I think we'd have to talk to some of the partners too, about maybe, but maybe over that as well, as well as maybe also just not only using the money, but maybe putting in more, more money too, I mean, so, I have all those conversations.
I think it's something that we're looking at beyond Monmouth County at a regional level, because we're not the first one to hit an issue like this with federal funding. Pretty much every Greenway project that I know of that's using this funding stream is hitting the same thing, so what can we do to build in opportunities for overages and higher contingencies?
Well, I mean, the projects down on the, on the perimeter front in Asheville range are a bunch of these cost overruns, but to their credit, to their credit, you know, it'd take a lot of heat for different things, but to their credit, TDA stepped in, they just, they were $4 million more dollars, they're $4 million more dollars, because we want to see these projects happen, and I think these, these projects we're working on at Woodfin are very, are very similar, I mean, everyone knows they're going to be great when they're done, and they're, for their part, so.
So, you know, for me, which you, you know, I mean, I vote for all of them, you know, how passionate I am about one Inka, I mean, you know, I've got a long history on that, I try by that thing every day, you know, and the Inka's across the street from it, you know, so I run into people all the time asking about that.
Can't hear you back here, Joe.
I run into people all the time asking about that, and, you know, once we get over the hurdle of voting to invest taxpayer dollars, I'd like to see us take a same draw, you know, drill down on the, on the plan, you know, really specifics on what we can do to just speed along, because it's part of the, Monmouth County sports park, and I guess that's come along, you know, pretty good, you know, the lights that went up out there, there's, there's some things that, you know, that we're seeing out there, and it'd be, it'd be really good for us to be able to, you know, when somebody asks when something's going to happen, to try to give a shot at giving the answer to that, even though it's very complicated. What's the federal dollars on just the Greenway, the trail portion in Inka? Do you remember? Do you remember? If not, you can bring it back.
It was six million, it's four point eight federal and one point eight, one point two county.
Four point two from us.
Yeah.
Four point eight from them.
And then six dollars.
Six million from TDA.
Yes, so twelve million.
So the four point eight is, that includes the, the trail system, that includes, but includes some sidewalk connectivity over there?
It can, our hope is to, like, to try to pay for it out of that four point eight.
Okay, so I thought it was in the, in the original design.
Yes.
So, anyhow, whatever we can do to have a, you know, a gathering and accelerate some of this, you know, I would be very, I would be for.
And I will ask Max to put the one side, there's one bullet point that I think is on that last slide, covers that, just that last slide. In order to make sure that y'all understand where this is going, and y'all maintain an understanding of where we're at with these Greenway projects, they are complex, they do take a while to get through, we're including Greenway projects in the comprehensive CIP for 2021, which will include funding requests, is to understand the complete design and construction costs as we know it at that time, and we'll have a better picture of that moving forward.
I do have one question, is there anything on the Black Mountain project?
They, I know that they...
We didn't tell them this that they were, you know, working on, I think, was, is there anything on that one?
Yeah, I believe our total funding allocation for that one was four hundred thousand dollars over three years, that project's moving forward, they hit two major issues, one was a railroad trestle that they were having to go under, and then the second was going under Highway nine there. And I believe they've actually come back with some designs that are going to be much more advantageous than they originally pictured, but it's just back up and going to federal and state approvals for that.
But Black Mountain is the lead on design allocation, where it's contributing funds.
Correct.
It is, sounds, sounds like they're doing that, that's right.
Correct.
All right, commissioners, any other questions or feedback for, for now? Josh, anything else you want to hear us, or anything else to...
I'm sure I'll be back to thank y'all for your time today.
Hey, appreciate the, appreciate everyone's support for this. All right, next up is Rachel Nygaard, who will be talking about the strategic partnership. I'm sorry, next up is the Greenways Committee, still on that, that's us. All right, so commissioners, as we talked about in our last meeting, we need to decide who's going to be going to it. So, I think, you know, I think there's a ton of applicants, twenty-five total, we interviewed all of them, we need to take probably a whole day to do it, so it's still going to be pretty time consuming, but I'm hoping we can maybe, all right, but to refresh our memory, how many decisions we all at any point? Nine?
Yes.
What are we, for each? Yeah, so we need to, we need to select nine, I don't know, maybe we can interview, I don't know, thirty, forty, fifty, something like that. So, one, one suggestion would be that we can just kind of go around, each person nominate, like, one person, we'll see how many come down in the first round, because I think we'll have a lot of overlap, is my hunch, and then we could go around again, everyone nominate your second first, and see how many we have, and see if we're starting to feel good about our pool of applicants, or other folks that people really, really want to have interviewed, so that was going to be my suggestion, so I'll go down one at a time, nominate someone, and then do it again, and see how many we have, and then we can do a third round if we don't have enough applicants or just others that we really want to talk to. Does that sound like a good process?
Maybe we get too much for her to fill that out, but it didn't...
Yeah, we can, we can ask him for his, him for his vote. All right, can we start on your side again and just go down?
Sure, my first recommendation is Ann Babcock.
Okay. Great, Al, you have somebody?
Trying to find someone, Al, do you have?
No. Again, there's a lot of people in there, I would, I would, it's great, but we can come back to you too.
Yeah, you want to pay us something?
That's fine.
Jennifer, these are not necessarily in, does it need to be ordered by names?
If you're going to get at least one more nominee, so just pick whoever, yeah.
Well, I'm expecting to get three, so I'm a little bit...
Well...
I got to get three, so, because he's picked out one area, Jennifer, do you have any? Because I just wanted to ask, do you have more seats?
Okay, well, the only reason I say you may not get three is that somebody might get nominated by other people, so it might be three, but just, you know. All right, I would definitely supportive of, of Ann as well, but also with her already being mentioned, I'll mention Lena Richards. Okay, Jesse?
Susan Bean.
Number three, yeah, maybe mention the persons in the number two screen, kind of find out over here easily when we go through, they're saying. Robert, you have a suggestion?
Yes, Teresa Williams, twenty-five.
Thank you. Okay. Um, let's, why don't we just kind of take another pass, this way, Amanda?
Number one, Dusty Allison.
Amanda, you're kicking, you're awesome, all right, Dusty Allison, great.
Did I get two this time?
You can have up to two, yes.
Number twenty-three, Derek Turno, and, uh... Number, what number is that? Five. Shay Brown, yeah.
Okay.
Twenty-two, Kelly Sparks.
All right, we're at nine so far. I don't know, I'm going to suggest, actually, I'm going to hold off around, let's see who else could it's mentioned from our other commissioners.
Air Commissioner.
Okay.
But I'm, just wanted my second one to say, twenty-two Kelly Sparks, which is, we're sure about her.
Okay.
And also I'm noticing this up here.
Turn your mics on up there.
We're really loading up District Three there, have you noticed that?
Yeah, that's you, you made it.
Yeah, but two eight zero six, two eight seven one five.
Are the districts that are listed here, that's the current district configuration, is that correct, Lamar, not the future elections map? I bet it is, because this is probably all created prior to...
Well, wait me a minute, I'm going to go on in which one.
I will actually defer to Josh, if Josh has that information, I don't want to give the incorrect answer to that.
Josh, do you know, so the districts that are listed here where the folks reside, those are deleted by the districts that exist today, not the new districts that will go into effect in a subsequent election cycle, is that right? These are the current district, that's right, okay. Yeah.
I was just remembering, these are current, these are current. When we get finished, we have to select nines, we don't need to select nine today.
No, no, we need a few more than nine.
We need more than nine.
Yeah, okay. So, we currently have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, I, I, and I wonder, yeah, I wasn't keeping track of how many we have from each district while we're doing this. But we need a few more, so why don't, I'm just going to go again, you know, if people haven't, you know, some other people...
We need one more pass.
So it is, are we, are we clearly deficient in a certain district where we need to be...
I don't know, read the names off, I'll give you the district.
Okay, let's see, Ann Babcock is two, Jennifer Grubinick is three, Lena Richards, three, Susan Bean, one, Teresa Williams, three, Dusty Allison, one, Derek Turno, one, Shay Brown, one, Kelly Sparks, three, Eric Ernst.
Kelly was actually two, I had like six from District Three.
No, we have, Kelly Sparks is three.
She's three.
According to this charter.
For the big issue, you have two, I thought, and, uh...
I know that she's, she lives in District Three.
She's three.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not counting the votes, I'm counting which district they're in, sorry, I'm in District, Eric Ernst is in District Three, so actually it's District Two, District Two, that we need definitely at least two more people to even, so, um, we've got a bunch from one and three, so, um, does anybody have, I'll start with Amanda, but we'll go down, and if you don't want to nominate someone, you can take a pass and reserve the right to bring it back later. Is there someone from District Two, Amanda?
Stuart Cowes, I don't know if I'm saying his last name correctly.
I'm sorry, Stuart.
Stuart Cowes, number eight.
Okay.
That's what happens when you...
Okay, um, Al or Joe, do y'all have another number two?
Well, I had, I had, I had checked this out, Stuart Cowes.
Yeah, I had two.
Let me check one, I'll take it. We checked seventeen.
What about Philip Coe from District Two, he's number seven.
No, it says Fletcher, is he in, is he, well, it says District Two though, is he in the Bunkham County?
Not in District Two.
We are...
There is a section of Fletcher in the, in the current old District Two.
Okay, so Lamar, he is a resident of Bunkham County. Correct.
Coes?
Philip Coe.
Coe.
What is Land Trem Resources? Oh, probably not, what is Land Trem Resources? Hey, Josh, hey, I also would just ask, and I'm sorry to put you on the spot, but are there, are there any other nominees that the staff would just want to make sure, at least, like, get interviewed on this list of applicants? You can think about that for a minute if you'd like to, but if there's, I think we're kind of getting near the, near the list, but we do need a few more, if there's anybody you feel like we ought to interview, feel free to, feel free to throw, throw...
I would probably take out on this because he wants to create a kudzu freeze on it. That's why I asked for a kudzu freeze on it, I'm fine with that, it's just on this application.
It's impossible.
It is impossible.
Okay.
So there was somebody else from District Two that we needed to look at to see whether we...
Yeah, all this, we're going to have any nominees?
Samuel Mason, let me...
Samuel Mason's number one, he's number one.
Yeah, he's, he's in District One.
He's not two.
I don't think I am.
Well, you got, how many you have in District Two?
We have two.
No, we have three, we have three.
We have three.
Jay Fine?
Yeah, who's Jay Fine?
Are you, are you, he's not currently on the list, are you suggesting three alone? I'm fine with that.
Yeah.
And Jay Fine? Okay, so we're now at one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, we're at twelve, we have a sufficient number from each district, from one and three, we have additional numbers.
Some of these could be that in District Two, I think some of these threes could be...
You know, for the, just to, for the sake of, you know, decision-making on this, my suggestion is that for this initial round, we are working under the assumption that the districts are the districts as they exist today, right? Like, in the, in the future, you know, when reappointments are happening, years in the future, I think we'll want to keep the, keep the policy of, and, and we may need to, we'll, you know, we'll just, just like elections, like the elections will be different in the future, but for now, I think we should just keep it based on the lines that exist today, otherwise this can get really messy. Anybody else, if there's anybody else that someone really, and we could wait, we could see if Commissioner Fryer wants to suggest, if he has one or two, then we're probably in the right neighborhood of interviewees, and we can always interview more, Josh, do you have anything to add?
No, I was looking at the list, I think you, you covered one of the ones I should ask by staff, I'm going to...
If y'all will look at it, look at his resume, you'll, you'll want him on the list too.
Okay, all right. He's another district one.
Yeah.
What do you say? All right, well, there it is.
Which I think is going to be in District Two now, Lester.
Turn your mic on, Robert.
Lester, Lester's one.
That's another district. Ally Howell, District, he lives in Lester? That's the current District Three, but that, again, that, we're going to keep with the existing district list. But do you, do you feel, you want him on the list? Okay, Ally Howell.
I missed Mason in my pass through, he definitely needs to be on that interview list, Mason.
Okay, I got it down, I got Jason, Samuel Mason?
Yeah, I missed, yeah.
Okay, all right, let's, let's stop, and we have a lot, this will be, now, how, how much time do we want to spend with these interviews? We have...
It must be thirty in an hour, do you, twenty minutes, please?
Uh, I think it should be, unfortunately, we're taking ten.
Five seconds.
I think, it's just with the volume you have of this, I think you'd have to do it pretty quickly, so I would suggest ten minutes, and...
I can't, I can't do an introduction in ten minutes.
I'm, that's where I'm at, what do y'all think?
I'm at fifteen minutes in fairness to them.
I'm going to ten minutes, because this will be the first, and it's what we did, we'll probably be one after that.
And you need, you need a minute or two to transition between people, it's going to end up being three hours of interviews, I would be willing to see that in ten minutes. Okay, sorry, Joe. All right, anything else people want to suggest on this for now, I think we've done what we needed to do. All right, perfect, now, we move on to...
Chairman, do y'all have a timeframe when y'all want to do these interviews?
That's a good idea.
We're not doing anything until after first year.
I, I would just like to let these applicants know that they're in consideration for...
First meeting of the year is on Tuesday the seventh, we also have an affordable housing committee that day, and there might be a pre-k meeting that day too. I would suggest we not do it on that day, because it's just going to be too much, I think we should probably call a special meeting sometime in the first two weeks of the year, so if we could just not figure that out right on the spot, but Lamar, if we could do, check in, and let's just find a date to come over in. I'd probably prefer afternoon, just myself, rather than morning, all right, now we come to Rachel Nygaard.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I am here to update you about strategic partnership grants, and there are two pieces, one of them is about appointing a new committee. So in light of the conversation that you're having related to the Parks Committee, it's something that we'll, we'll want to talk through regarding the process for selecting those appointments. To begin, I wanted to update you about the strategic partnership grant process. You should have a copy of the grant guidelines and your materials for today's meeting, the grant process officially opened on Monday of this week, so December sixteenth. The information is posted online for members of the public and people associated with community organizations, they can go to bunkhamcounty.org/grants and review these grant guidelines, which were created based on the guidance and criteria that we got from the Board of Commissioners for this grant program. that we got from the Board of Commissioners for this grant program. Those grant guidelines include thorough information about the eligibility timeline, grant application process, grant writing workshop, et cetera. There is one item related to the eligibility criteria that we wanna come back in and check in with you about. And that is the type of organization. When the Board of Commissioners established the criteria for this grant program, we made it, um, so that nonprofit organizations would be eligible to apply for funding. The question is, would we like for public organizations to also be eligible to apply? I know that there's been some conversation between members of the board and with the manager about potential eligibility for a governmental organization to be able to make application to Buncombe County for funding for a community project through this avenue. If, if the board would like to take that up for consideration, we can bring a marked-up version of those grant guidelines on the agenda for your next reader meeting, which would be January seventh to vote on.
Which would just simply say that public agencies are also eligible?
It would.
Which could be, like, better.
They would essentially have, I was thinking of the timeline, that the, um, grant applications are due in mid-February, on February fourteenth, so, um, those public organizations would have, um, usually a month or five weeks to, to get that application in.
Okay, sorry, keep going.
Is there interest in putting that on your agenda for January seventh?
Well, maybe just to kind of like, you know, first blush, you might, you know, that doesn't seem like what this is about, but, um, just as a reminder of what we currently do, right, and maybe some of the rationale behind that, so we think about that before maybe, um, making a decision. Currently, um, currently we fund, it's a small one, like, we fund the HRC, right, besides a jointly appointed board by the city council and the county commission, and the scope of that board is countywide. There's probably more things they deal with in the city, but they do have a countywide mission, that's my understanding.
That's accurate, that's the Historic Resources Commission. There's forty-five hundred dollars, I think, in the strategic partnership grants currently that goes to the City of Asheville for that city-county work.
With the rationale being that, you know, it shouldn't fall solely on the city, this is something we do together, so that's the rationale for that. And then on the, um, on the, um, nature center, you know, the, the city used to charge a lower rate, like, this is a subsidized operation, right, like, it costs the city a half million dollars a year, whatever the per-month is, to run the nature center, so since they put a lot of taxpayer money from their jurisdiction into it, they gave a discounted rate to city residents to attend, but then I think some commissioners were like, well, how come it costs more for county residents to go than the city? And so I think the city, he said, well, you know, we all concluded, well, it's, if, if they are putting in way more money, if we want the county residents to have the same low rate, we oughta put in the funds to make up that difference to make the city whole, so. I don't know, I kinda feel like these different places where we work together, um, they each have their own rationale. It kinda feels different to me than the rationale that goes with strategic partnerships, grant pools, so. I'm, I'm, I'm sort of thinking, just sort of thinking out loud here, but I wonder if maybe we should pull them out, but, but just sort of in a separate decision process decide if we, you know, we wanna continue uh, those partnerships with the other public agencies or, or not, but I'm just, I'm just thinking about, I personally would like to see this continue myself.
So I'm gonna jump, jump on the nature center, and I think playing, you know, everybody in my neighborhood goes to nature center, and, uh, taxpayers from all over the county go to the nature center. I don't know where you put it in, but to me, that, that's one of the things that's been confusing about this, is that, you know, I, I don't wanna lose advocacy for some of these, you know, destinations or some of these, uh, things that we find. A lot of the city funds are refunded, and people in the city pay county taxes. And, uh, you know, there's some things that make sense for us to do together. Nature Center is one of, we lost the Health Adventure, no way we need to lose this one. And the Nature Center's a, is a good place for folks to go, so I don't know where it, yeah, where, where it lands, but it needs to land somewhere. Can I answer, you got any thoughts on?
Before you continue, I'd like to jump in and just add one clarification, um, with permission. The Friends of the WNC Nature Center is a nonprofit organization. That funding is provided through a nonprofit organization, and they are still eligible to apply as currently structured. Please continue.
The items that we were talking about that would require that the government entities are eligible to apply were like the CALE, the Youth Leadership that we do directly fund to the City of Asheville, or even to some of the Buncombe County schools, but there's funding that we're specifically going to government entities, not the nature center or, or Historic Commission like that, but those are the items. Those are nonprofits, the items that we were looking at was direct funding that we provide to the City of Asheville. The one that comes to mind was the CALE, the Youth Leadership Academy, that we fund.
When we funded the nature center in the past to make up for the, uh, you know, the charging to city residents plus the county residents, did that go to Friends Group or to the city?
Yes, to the Friends of the Nature Center.
And then they passed it on to the, well, whatever, we don't really care how they did it, but it fixed the problem, right? The county residents being charged with the different.
I mean, is it, is it the best way to, to deliver that money to the Friends of Nature Center or collectively? Or go to somewhere else?
I guess how we have to fund that. The idea of thought of funding the city on that app was true, was truly to the nature center, and that was our direct support to the nature center. So that wasn't one that we were talking about here in the government entities.
Okay. Pete, you're gonna let, I'll let it, how do we talk about?
Well, why don't we, here's my suggestion, why don't we, why don't we amend the process so that public agencies can apply, so we're not precluding the possibility? And, um, we'll, we'll let the process unfold, if, if some of the things that, you know, and again, I think this might be part of the outcome, though there's this whole new way of doing it, I mean, some things might fall out of this funding process, and we might, then it's hard to say, are we okay with that, or are we gonna step in and separately decide to fund some things that are not gonna get funded, uh, otherwise, so. 'Cause I do feel like some of these, some of these things, like, like this particular issue, like, it, I, it's hard to admit, like, the rationale we have for funding this is not the same criteria we're giving this group to choose how to program its funds, right? So I feel like it's, it's unlikely that we get funded through our new process, but it should be, but we might need to find a different way to do it if, if that.
So we, you know, my concern with having, you know, a committee and, you know, there's certain things that, you know, it's my job to represent the whole county now, and to advocate the things that I hear. So I just wanna make sure that's not lost, and this is a great example of nature, to make sure that that's not lost in the process, so. Thank you for saying the same thing. Maybe Al, Robert, definitely owe you bucks?
I support it, I mean, I do as well.
Yeah, I do.
So we'll bring, um, an amended, proposed amended version for a vote at your next meeting.
That'll leave you on. We just need to make sure, I think, it was true, I commented in an email, to make sure that if we're amending anything that we're, we have that's already in place, that when it comes to us, that it's got strike lines in it and red tramp. Because it's impossible for me to determine what it was before, and I, and I, I can't remember what it was I emailed, but it's, maybe it's gonna be something, maybe something we're looking at tonight, but if it is, no pressure, but, you know.
All right, that'll be the same as Rachel.
Yep, that's, that's good on the, on the, um, eligibility item, now we have the committee. We took applications for the Strategic Partnership Grant Committee for a three-week period, and received twenty-one applications. Those applications, um, are being compiled by staff currently. We reached out to the applicants, um, in the first couple of days this week, gathering some additional info from them, and clarifying around connection to nonprofit organizations, um, so that we make sure that we have full and complete information about, um, their background and their expertise when we bring this to you. And so I guess the question to the board is, would you like to use the same process for determining, uh, members that you appoint to this committee, as you have just done with the committee discussion that you just held?
Could you walk?
Yes.
Could you just walk us through sort of the timeline you envisioned on that committee?
So the last bullet, the last bullet on the page, uh, on the screen that you're looking at may be the one that's confusing you, because it's, it says committee appointment scheduled for January seventh. That's when the staff was thinking that we might bring a recommended slate, uh, for the board to consider. Um, it sounds like the board would like to, on a one-by-one basis, um, select and interview candidates. We will have some categories, um, assigned to the applicants, so we've asked them to share with us what expertise they bring, say, in the, in the category of environmental stewardship versus educate, educated and capable community. So there will be some, um, some natural categories that show themselves, as well as, um, age and zip code and attributes, um, in addition to the narrative answers to the questions about what they bring to the board, but, um, what we'll do is organize that information for you, present it, um, and then in terms of timeline, we would like to have the committee seated now later than when the applications close on February fourteenth. It would be ideal to have them selected prior, so that we can do some orientation before they begin reviewing the applications.
So you have twenty-one applications right now?
Yes.
I mean, I would like to see twenty-one applications, just like we did here.
Great.
So that, I mean, I know sometimes you can categorize people by experience on some of these, but somebody that might know the most about what we're looking for might just be a single mom of three, you know, so.
Great, well, we're completing that information, um, right now, um, it should be ready within the next day or two, um, and so we'll use the, um, court to commit information to you and follow your lead.
Okay, sounds great. All right, thank you. All right, last item is the Catholic Charities, or Church churches.
I have that under place, a lot like this. But I receive a request from Catholic charities regarding the future of refugee resettlement for right here in Canada. In September, President Trump issued an executive order that requires written consent by the county and the state consenting or permitted for refugees to resettle in our, in our county. Catholic charities shared with me that only refugees that have a link or family in the county are resettled here. But the question before you today is to discuss whether or not you would consider signing a consent to allow refugees to resettle here. I do have Ms. Sandra Buck in the audience with us, she's from the Diocese, and she's here that she can assist and answer any questions you have about resettlement, your resettlement program.
Thank you, Ms. Buck, and, um, I'd invite you to just maybe share a few thoughts with us about this. This is, uh, this is not a process that local governments in the past have, you know, been invited to have input on, so.
It's a procedure, so you've never had to do it before, 'cause it's a brand-new procedure, so. We've been resettling refugees, uh, for about forty years. I'm based out of Charlotte, but, um, people have been coming here, actually, I think it was, um, World Relief that used to resettle refugees here years ago, and we have an office in Asheville, and so we've got a case coordinator there who is actually a former refugee from Russia who works with these families. And we now have a replacement program where we actually resettle directly into the Asheville area. Uh, we've resettled about three hundred refugees here in the last three years. Uh, the majority of them are placed in Buncombe County, because they're coming here to join their family that already lives here. Um, the, the consent process is brand-new, um, and what we're required to do is get the governor and the chief executive officer of every county where we place refugees to sign a consent, saying that it's okay to continue doing that.
Thank you so much. And so, uh, we have a draft letter, you can see the good letter the governor signed is in here, so we could sign this little letter, and, um, I'm certainly happy to do so, or to have the county manager do it, one of us do it, but it's, we wanted the commission to, you know, be aware of this and to, uh, concur.
I have a question. Where are these refugees from?
The refugees that are coming to the Asheville area are from Russia, Ukraine, and Moldova.
None from any third world countries?
No, just those three places.
Oh, okay. Yeah, sure is.
That's because they're coming to family, and their families already live here, so we're not just bringing folks that will be on social services, so to speak. They're coming to families.
Is there a requirement that there be family here?
Turn your mic off.
Or is that a new requirement?
Uh, that's not a requirement, that just happens to be how the refugees are coming into Asheville. Um, when they, as soon as they arrive, they can petition to bring their family members that they left behind. That process takes a couple of years, um, but once they're approved to travel, then they will typically resettle with their, what we call their US tie, or their anchor family.
I'm not likely to, I'm just, I'm just, I'm not. Who would do? I'm not able, but, uh, Senator Danny, I just want. Maybe we should present this, they normally, for, I should say, it's a community, yeah. That's a large, let me turn this back on, that is a large community in this county, that.
Yes, it is.
It, it really is.
And they're well-supported, a lot of them come and they start their own businesses. They, you know, they employ their family members immediately. Uh, and the other thing to note is, once refugees arrive in the United States, they are free to travel wherever they wish. So any counties that don't consent will still end up receiving refugees just as secondary migrants. It's just a lot harder for us to provide the services if we're not, if they're not in the county with their family.
I think you have a very good idea, is there a timeline by which we would need to make decisions?
Nine national has requested consent by the end of the year. Um, the deadline's been pushed back by the State Department, but the, uh, nine national organizations that resettle refugees are all submitting their proposals for next year, at, at, sometime in the middle of January, and are hoping to be able to report with their proposal how many consents they've received.
Uh, well, thank you for the, um, thank you for the information, it sounds like we should schedule this for commission vote at the first meeting, uh, in January, which is on January, the, um, January seventh, first Tuesday of the month. So we'll plan on having it on the agenda to make a, make a decision that evening. And if commissioners have any other questions, or if there's additional information that can be provided to us, uh, please send that along.
Feel free to reach out to me, I can answer whatever questions that you have.
Okay, great. Um, commissioners, any other questions for now? But because it does sound like we need to make a decision at that meeting, if you do have additional questions, please do bring them to the county manager, and we'll work, we'll work with the organization to make sure you get any information you need from now on in. All right?
Okay.
Thank you so much for being here, Commissioner.
Thanks for having me.
All right, that's everything we had on our agenda, so if there's no other items, I think we're adjourned, we'll be back at five o'clock for the meeting.